Fifty-nine. Oh, it's twelve fifty-nine, it's one o'clock and we're calling this work session of the FCC.
Alright.
Tim.
Thank you commissioners, so this afternoon, we're gonna do an overview of budgets, funds and policies. And I am joined today by our expert staff, so do you wanna? Let everybody introduce themselves.
I'm Candace Bryant and I'm our new, I'm not supposed to stand up, I'm our new finance director. I'm almost as new as you are, maybe a few weeks lead time on you. And I'm excited to give you an overview of the budget, the process for creating the budget, our funds in general, and then a few other pieces of information around creating and amending the budget.
Right.
Tim.
Hi, I'm Liz Miller, I'm the operations director, so I've really helped in the pacing of the budget and really scaffolding and being strategic about how we work on it throughout the year to get to a really great product that we are proud of and comfortable sometime in December.
Vince. Duncan.
Okay, yeah, Duncan, just on the parts for creation, we're not too far straight. I'm just gonna do it. You need to, I like, explaining to me.
Do you want me to draw?
Yes.
Okay, alright, okay. Taking off.
Alright, so at a high level, an operating budget is one of the most important things that we put together in terms of the county's works. It serves several functions, at the most basic level, it is a legal document and it gives local government officials the authority to incur obligations, pay expenses. Through our budget, we allocate resources among different departments and our budget should reflect the county's priorities and policies. It also controls how much each department can spend. So, the budget process, we're talking about a county, a lot of the things that we do are guided by Colorado revised statutes, so I've put the statutes in here. Certainly don't have to go look them up, but I worked for the state previously and I like to go look at the revised statute because it does dictate what you do. So, Colorado counties, their budget process is governed by CRS, which is Colorado Revised Statute, Title twenty-nine, Article one, and it requires that we adopt a balanced budget. That's just one in which revenues that we anticipate to receive and expenses going out the door, that those are equal to one another. So, in businesses, you could have a budget deficit or over expense in your budget. We don't really do that for governments. We budget for revenues that we know we'll get and expenses that are equal and we distribute those budget amounts or appropriations to different departments. So, a big piece of that is that we can't overspend in our budget or we have to actually amend things to change our budget. So, the budget process starts early in the year and it will begin with assessing your goals and priorities for the coming year. And based on those decisions, Tim will provide guidance to offices and departments mid-year about what their top dollar budget amounts are so they can start to look at their expenses, cut back if they need to, have a little more wiggle room, understand what things they can invest in depending on, you know, the priorities that our board is set. Through the second quarter of the year, our offices and departments start refining their budgets based on feedback that Tim brings to us from you. And then we begin preparing requests for additional funding if departments have identified a real need. Then the county manager prepares a preliminary budget that you guys will review and it gets presented to you before October fifteenth and that's required by state statute that it's presented to you by that date. Next, please.
Yes, and during, just real quick, just on that, so like on the second bullet, you're working closely with the board throughout the year, really understanding your priorities, guides my budget message to everybody else as they develop their budgets. So, it's based on work sessions that we have throughout the year with you all and then leading when you guys set your priorities for the county, what those are, and then the guidance to those offices and departments on that. And then working with Candace and her team on revenue projections. So, and we'll probably get into this, but like in August, the assessor gives his preliminary valuations. So, that's really what we start to work off of, based off of current year middle levies. And then from there, we're able to provide you guys scenarios of middle levies, projections, increases should you so choose. Same for sales tax revenues and the data from the year before and then current year actuals and projecting out.
Between October fifteenth and December fifteenth, you guys will deliberate and make changes to that preliminary budget, be able to ask questions, understand the why behind some of the requests. At the time that the budget is adopted, taxes are also levied. So, we'll kind of have an idea what taxes we will, tax levies we'll adopt. And then that is to comply with state statute, which specifically states that a budget must be adopted prior to the levying of taxes. But so you don't adopt a wildly expansive budget and then we make our taxes match our ideal world budget. But that it's a realistic budget and then we levy the taxes after. Throughout the year, our budget is amended to provide spending authority for new revenues and initiatives that we didn't know about or anticipated at the time of adoption. It also helps to cover administrative purposes, to provide spending authority in the current year for rollover projects or restricted funds. And the way that a budget is updated throughout the year, that's called a supplemental budget appropriation. And that provides spending authority to utilize the additional revenues or sources of funding, not adopted in the budget. State law requires appropriations prior to the funds being spent. So, it's not that we overspend and they're like, oh no, we gotta shuffle these around and fix it. We agree to overspend and move appropriated monies, monies that have already been dedicated to one area to other areas if it's warranted before we just do it.
Um, oh, sorry.
No, go for it.
We've come across through training alongside other counties, other counties who are in the red really bad. How, like, give some examples of like how they do that? Like, if we can't spend, you know, if state law tells us, you know, we have to have the funds before we spend them, how are these guys getting themselves into debt so bad? What should we not do?
Not spend the money before you approve it. That's partially why this is in place. I don't know specifically what counties you've talked with and I'm brand new here. I would imagine that they probably haven't passed their audits with a clean audit because you're violating of state statute when you spend more than what's appropriated. There also might be a case where a year was overspent and it wasn't caught till after the year was over, but the recording of revenues and expenses wasn't done correctly and so it wasn't caught until the auditor was doing the audit after the year ended and then the adjustments are made if they need to be.
Bad bookkeeping, pretty much is.
I would think or just approving before, approving or not approving till after you've already done that damage of spending funds. Do you have any?
Yeah, I, uh, we, um, would not let you all do that. And, you know, recommend, you know, through the budget process, you know, going through things of, it's hard, right, if there are areas that have to cut, we're gonna come with those recommendations to you so you understand what those are and so we can maintain a balanced budget. And there is a way, so we'll get into this a little later, but like with the general fund, with our reserve money, you can spend out of your reserve, but you don't wanna spend out of your reserve for normal operating. So, if, you know, we have a healthy general fund reserve at Lake County, but you don't wanna spend your normal operating, your normal salaries, your normal fuel expenses, all of that out of your reserves. You need to.
The city just did that. The city just took two hundred thousand dollars from their reserves to cover operating and they had a discussion about like, this is not sustainable. You can't do this year after year, you have to find a new revenue stream or you have to cut services. But they did dip into it this year, which is like typically a huge no-no.
And you'll.
You don't.
You do not do that.
No.
And I, you know, you've probably witnessed over the past couple of years, St. Vincent Hospital District ended up in a lot of trouble.
My friends, we're not getting paid to provide medical services.
Yeah.
In between.
Yeah.
Crazy.
So, St. Vincent, you know, has done a massive course correction. The leadership of the hospital now is fantastic. They ended in the, in the black this year. So, but that comes down to having proper controls, good executive and then that relationship with the board and being open and honest and transparent of, you know, if alarm bells are ringing, you should listen to them. You also saw that with the school district this year. There was structural issues in the management of their funds. I think those have been addressed by the new leadership of the school district. But, yeah, it is worrisome and it was hard watching the city do that this year because you really have to take a deep dive into the budget to find those cuts to come to a balanced budget. And that's why we'll talk about it in this, but as we provide quarterly updates to the board, you will receive quarterly budget updates from each department and office where they're at, those kind of things. But then quarterly, that's where too, you kind of have like a gut check of how the year is going or like Candace talked about of needing to make that supplemental budget appropriation, right? And those will all come before the board for a decision. Cool.
Alright, so Colorado county budget requirements. We have several requirements and these are established by DOLA. Things that we are responsible for providing when we submit the approved budget to them are a written budget message that kind of explains how we arrived at our budget and any important things that we need to note about different funds. Expenditures and revenues, they need to be described with explanatory schedules or statements that classify expenditures by object and revenues by source. And some of these are relatively new, they've kind of beefed up the reporting requirements for counties. We need to have estimated beginning and ending fund balances. They like to see three years of comparable data to be shown in the budget. No deficits fund spending. And then this is particularly important for us because it's new for our county or newer. We just have engaged in a certificate of participation. So, now we actually have an agreement supplemental schedule that has to be submitted and we have to show where we have planned to pay any payments owed. And I think they asked for any really large expenditures that we plan for in a year to show that any borrowing, to use like, I think this was for the courthouse, would be budgeted for, that we haven't just borrowed money with no real plan for the funds or a plan to pay payments on it every year.
Yeah.
So, we submit this to DOLA and then DOLA is who reviews it and approves it?
Yeah.
Cool.
And we have deadlines, which we'll talk about, kind of timing for ones.
And on the, uh, on the DOLA website, under local government, local government finances, you can go and look at prior years for Lake County, city, but any local jurisdiction in the state, everything is also filed with the state through the Department of Local Affairs. So, all that historic documentation is there as well.
Including supplemental.
Yeah. Yeah.
But they approve the budget for our budget or just the?
They, they make sure that you are following rules.
Yeah.
Or that we are following the rules. And, yeah.
They're not gonna come back and tell us to change what we're budgeted for your department. If it's out of balance, it says a balance and make us resubmit.
Yeah, yeah. But and when you, when we meet with Randy Snead, who's our DOLA rep for our region, right, she can touch more on this as well, but you know, DOLA can be another like alarm ringer of like, what you guys doing?
Cruising for bruising.
Yeah.
Amending the budget. So, statutory budget changes, transfers and supplemental appropriations are covered in CRS twenty-nine dash one dash one oh nine. Local governments, subject to local government budget law, which we are, have to follow statutory procedures to authorize any spending in excess of the appropriation or the spending authority of the budget. The appropriation has to be made by fund and we're gonna talk just a little bit more about what funds are and how we use them at Lake County within the budget and can be made by spending agency, so department, unit, commissioners within a fund. And anytime we do a budget appropriation or a budget amendment, we can't exceed the expenditures specified in the budget without filing this first. So, the budget has to be amended by one of the statutory procedures that are identified on the DOLA website and I'm gonna walk through a few different options with you. When, like as it's happening or before, preferably before expenditures exceed the appropriation. I'm relatively new and we just went through budget appropriations and one big thing we have changed is in the past, we would have budget amendments or supplemental requests, but they wouldn't identify in writing where the funds were coming from and to where they were going. It was just, we will move money to cover X. Well, that money has to come from somewhere and part of your job is to determine where is the money coming from and where is it going? And we as finance are not mind readers, so we need that direction to know, okay, well, they just said we're gonna give someone else more money, but if you didn't identify where it was coming from, it's very hard for us to update the financials to match what you've decided. So, that, do you know that you have to say where it's coming from and where it's going to, which I guess wasn't very clear before.
Yeah.
Are you saying that it wasn't clear in the financials or it wasn't clear a direction from the board or both?
It wasn't clear in the approved documents, which left us having to do a lot of legwork and research to go back and claw back that information when everyone's very busy.
Which.
You guys, we were having to cut people down to get information we needed.
Which would lead to delays and things like audits and such.
Yeah.
Okay, now, makes sense.
So, we've, we've refined that process now too in that when we come to the board for a decision, right, you'll have recommendations and then also like the where from, where to.
Yeah. Alright, next, please. Thanks for grabbing.
Yeah.
You all seemed great at that in the budget discussion that I observed. We were very clear about like, okay, well, where is that coming from?
Yeah.
Yeah. Seems like you've been doing it forever.
So.
So, budget is just not written down.
Yeah.
Oh, got it.
That's the part, so when we do like budget, uh.
Now we recognize you.
And then that's those resolutions, yes, like. And then it provides a clear historical record as well of being like, what were they doing?
Yeah.
And like, oh, okay, now we know why it's coming from here.
Moving forward.
Yes.
Showing your work.
Yep.
Cool.
Yep.
So, types of budgetary changes. There are transfers of appropriated monies. Appropriated just means there are money or assets that have already been devoted for a special purpose. If the appropriation is by fund, that means everything is within the same fund. So, for example, the general fund, then monies can be transferred from one item to another within the fund without having to do a statutory budget amendment. However, if monies are being transferred between appropriated funds, funds that are set aside for something else or between appropriated spending agencies within a fund, then the budget has to be amended per statute. So, there are also supplemental, so you have questions?
Yes, would that be like a mechanism where we could move funds from one allocation to say like Roden Bridge or something like that?
If they're within the same fund, you don't have to follow statutory steps. But if they were not within the same fund, then we have to do an actual statutory budget amendment. And we'll go through what steps are, what that entails.
Are we gonna talk about this, about funds that we have?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Supplemental budget and appropriations. Those will be like, we're trying to do them quarterly. Do we need to make a change? Does someone need more money in a different place that we don't need it where we originally budgeted? Things happen, life changes, we may need to change the budget we had at the beginning of the year. This is when we would do a supplemental. So, if the local government, us, receives revenues that are not anticipated or not assured, we don't count money that we think we will have, we count money we know we will have when we adopt the budget. If those revenues come in and it's something other than property tax and the levies, the expenditures of those revenues require an adoption of a supplemental budget and our appropriation to authorize the new money and how it can be spent. So, if we get a huge grant that we didn't know that we were gonna get, A, you guys have to approve grants that are large, but B, we need to know how we're receiving that money and what we will be spending on. And some of that is dictated by, you know, the grant itself if it is a grant. Any additional property tax revenue goes into fund balance and that's available for the next year's budget. So, we don't spend property taxes that we have received for the next year before that next year starts.
Yeah. Questions? See you later, thank you.
Well, it's, I know there's logical reasons why, but it's when we can't spend money that we don't have yet. I still, there are certain avenues, like what we did with the renovation of the courthouse that we technically can, but we just have to have that preemptively budgeted for the upcoming years, I guess, for lack of better terminology.
So, kind of. If, so for like the renovation project and for the certificate of participation process, so the prior board, right, they initiated this process, Chris and I and Finance spent a lot of time doing the research, doing everything, Lauren and I coming up with the budget for the renovations. And then really the focus was on that, the payment amount, like what can the county afford without having to increase taxes or cut in other areas?
Right.
So, so then we, so then when they went forward with the certificate of participation, it said, we are going to sell the COPs for eight million dollars. We're gonna take in the eight million dollars, that eight million dollars is for the courthouse renovation. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I have one hundred percent faith that you guys have done this, you know, how it needs to be done and in the best way possible. It, the verbiage is still pretty tricky for me to digest. So, I just, you know, and I know I'm asking questions that we have already asked, I just, more times explained to me in different ways, but I'll be able to understand. So, I apologize for kind of rehashing this same subject over and over, but.
No apologies needed and well, I talked with Alan from Steefel Finance. We'll find a time too for him to like walk through, he was like our COP guy.
Yeah.
So, we, so we'll, we'll find a time to have a work session with him to provide that full overview. But another example to think through, like what Candace just talked about is like, let's say, if for sales tax, we estimate a conservative amount of sales tax every year. So, for twenty twenty-four, we estimated five point eight million. It came in at six million. But in the budget, we only said, we estimated the five point, or the other five point eight million. We didn't spend six million, so that extra two hundred K goes into the general fund. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
That's another example.
Can we, is there ever like a precedent for doing the opposite of like, okay, we're projecting this much, but we knock twenty percent off of that to forecast if the economy takes a dump or something like that?
Yes, and so the estimates for twenty twenty-five tax year, so I estimated five point five million. Just seeing, looking with Adam Ducharme Tourism and Economic Development, looking at sales tax numbers, just kind of the trends of like people traveling, the sales tax numbers. So, we estimated lower for twenty twenty-five. If it comes in higher, that is awesome, that's great, right? That goes to the bank, sweet, whereas extra discretionary fund for the board to decide where you want it to go. Now, if it comes in less, as we watch the revenues come in and Nikki sent you guys sales tax and lodging tax receipts to, yesterday. So, as we track those throughout the year, if we're anticipating that we're gonna come in less than that, then we need to come back to you guys and be like, our estimates were off. You know, and by our best estimate of like how much the sales tax will be lower than five point five million. And then ask you guys what, you know, the board's preferences. It's cutting back on projects, if it is finding other funds to cover something, things like that. But for the majority of the general fund, everything that we do, so personnel, that kind of stuff, is based off of middle levy. So, we know for certain, we're gonna get like ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent of that money.
Excellent, okay, so operating expenses are pretty much locked in.
Yeah.
Projects are kind of.
Yeah.
Where that wiggle room happens.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
Would you also say that debrusing has given us even more wiggle room?
Yes.
Where we can actually save year over year now instead of needing to spend those tax burdens?
Yes.
Alright, other types of budgetary changes are revised appropriations. So, if revenues are lower than anticipated in the adopted budget, the board can adopt a revised downward appropriation ordinance or resolution. So, reduce spending to less than what was originally budgeted, which we kind of just talked about. Budget contingency is in a situation where there's an unforeseen emergency, we can adopt a budget contingency at a public meeting. I would imagine, I wasn't here at the time, but I would imagine COVID probably constituted this and we probably saw this happen. The vaccines are an emergency, just need to be detailed within a public meeting at which the contingency is adopted and then that resolution or ordinance also has to be sent to DOLA. So, if we're in an emergency situation, whatever that might be, we do have a documentation and reporting requirement.
And we'll tie in a little bit of this, Monclair, Director of Office of Emergency Management goes over OEM, talking about emergency financing and things like that. And then it will get into it when we take a deeper dive on each of the budgets, but so built into the commissioner's budget and built into the manager's budget, our contingencies. So, throughout the year, if there's a, oh, here's an opportunity, you're like, boom, that cost more than anticipated, right? There's some budgetary authority, we already have some money set aside.
Alright, steps to amend the budget. The steps to amend a budget for a budgetary transfer or supplemental budget and appropriation are, publish a notice of intent to amend the budget where if the expenditure is less than fifty thousand, you can just post notice. If you're going to just post notice, it's required that the amendments for the budget must indicate the same information contained in the notice of the budget for the regular adoption of the budget. Has to include a few things and there are some timing rules. So, it must include the date and time of the budget amendment, information about the availability for inspection of the proposed amount of the resolution or ordinance and a statement, and a statement that electors may file objections to the proposed budget at any time before we adopt it. So, we kind of have to say, this is what we're thinking about, here's when it will happen. If you have objections, there's an opportunity to say so. And that's a big reason for the publishing of notice or the posting of notice, depending on the monetary amount. Timing, spending in excess of the appropriation is not permitted. Therefore, the statutory amendment of the budget or contingency has to happen before we're spending in excess of the original appropriation. And this is partially to also give our constituents a chance to know we're thinking about changing something and if they feel passionately about it, to let us know. The next steps after posting or publishing notice, depending on the value of the change. The next steps after posting or publishing notice, depending on the value of the, the change, is to conduct a hearing, so we'll have a meeting. And then we have to adopt the budget amendment, uh, by formal action. And then once you guys have adopted it by formal action, it's certified, recorded. I receive a recorded copy of it and then I'll, I'll file that adopted resolution that's been recorded and dated, um, along with in the budget portal, um, to DOLA. So where we submit the budget, we submit all the amendments, um, any changes, all kind of go in the same place and you can go and click on those and see, see that they've been posted. And you can see what we've posted in the past, which is for me being here, helpful.
Does that stay available to the public like in perpetuity? As long as from when we started keeping record, there's no like timeline?
Yeah, I don't know how far back DOLAs go, maybe to the nineties?
But we also adopted the G resolution.
Right.
So we have.
So we have that, yeah.
Resolution in house too.
Yeah. And then we post, we also post those on our, on the website as well. So you'll see prior year's budget, any supplemental, uh, budget, budgets made are all posted on the website as well.
So filing the approved budget has to happen, uh, with DOLA by January thirty first. If you feel like we're getting close to the end of the year and we're rushing you to get a decision, this is why, because they're rushing us to have it confirmed and posted. So this file has to include the adoption, the resolution adopting the budget, any resolutions to appropriate, and if applicable, they would like for us to be, um, setting mill levies. So this all has to be kind of in a combined file. So it's kind of, uh, getting everything all done before the end of the year. The holidays happen to align with a lot of reporting requirements for us. So we are trying to get as many things done as quickly as we can, so we're ahead of the curve and not behind it.
As of current, these stands, we're in good shape with these deadlines?
Yeah, everything is met. And is it, in the, is the county fiscal year of the constitution? So to add layers of complexity for you, the county's fiscal year is January one to December thirty first. The state's fiscal year is July one to June thirtieth. The federal fiscal year is September to October.
That's convenient.
It sure is.
It really streamlines the reporting process.
Yeah, yeah. And then, you know, various grant funders also have different fiscal years. So.
And this is your job, keeping track of all of this?
Yeah.
Team, team one.
Thank you so much, for, yeah.
Okay. Good job, thank you.
We're very lucky to have you, Candace, you definitely know that it's been a struggle over the years and I'm sure everybody has done their level best, but appreciate having you now.
Thanks. We're still learning, so you have to keep patient with me as I continue to learn. I have some pretty good resources.
You're in good company as far as still learning.
So our budget calendar, um, have to shout out to Liz. She's been so great at, we are starting to really dial in when things are due and have a formalized calendar for achieving those items as a consecutive admin team. So January one is the start of our fiscal year. October fifteenth, we've got to submit a proposed budget to the governing body. And we have to publish a notice of budget upon receiving the proposed budget. That's why we start in October, so we have plenty of time to make all the changes we want and need to make without scrambling at the last minute to get the budget done and turned in. December fifteenth is the deadline for the certification of the mill levy. December twenty second is the deadline for county commissioners, you guys, to levy taxes and certify the levies to the assessor. And then December thirty first is the absolute deadline for budget adoption.
Yep. And so, things that inform this process, data points that we use. So thinking of like operational budgets, you know, we, we look at prior year actuals or current year actuals. So you know, in twenty twenty two and twenty three, right, when inflation was super high, like, we knew, Michael knew, the fuel cuts were also high. So we, you know, use that as a data point. Through Zoe, our HR director, you know, she has access through CTSI and then through her own statewide list serve of county HR directors, um, looking at salary comps. So looking at salary levels of all counties all across the state. So then we search out, we look at like, you know, who's comparable to Lake County? Population, taxes, those kind of things, like are we kind of in line, right? You know, if you look at Summit County, um, their job postings and what they pay, we cannot do that. But, um, we can offer good salaries for folks who do live here or come up from B V. And, um, and that, so there's like other data points, right, that we use that inform all of that, plus, you know, economic indicators. The state has, um, the governor's office of, um, OSPV, Office of State Planning and Budgeting. So that's the governor's economic advisors, and then there's legislative council. Uh, legislative council, um, provides legal advice and economic advice to the legislature. So they come out with, they're not doing, they're pretty close, and reports on economic indicators of the state, how the state's doing. And we can drill down into some of the metropolitan regions to kind of see like where we're at. We also work closely, you know, we get updates from Eagle and Summit County for their tourism directors, their chamber directors. I don't know if you've heard of or met Chris Rumor yet, but he runs the Vale Valley Partnership. He provides us with data on trends that are going on in the Vale Valley, right? Which is a good indicator for us as well on how we're, how we are doing. So there's all, all of those things that tie in as well, um, the data that we use, um, looking at our budget and how to set things. And the other one, where I was going with this is tying in with another elected office. So the assessor, right, in August, he provides the preliminary valuation. So that's like numbers that Candace and I, Lauren and I can use to really begin to build the budget. From there, kind of knowing what the mill levies would be. In December is when he gives the, um, the final valuation, right? Which is generally really close to his August numbers. So then we know all the work we've done from August going forward is, is pretty close and pretty accurate.
Um, so, from a, at a high level, the Lake County budget timeline. Quarter one, January to March. In March, uh, you guys will be voting on quarter one supplemental budget request. The department prepares memos comparing twenty twenty four budgets to actuals. And the county manager presents the overview of the twenty twenty four actuals. So you might be wondering, why in March are we looking at twenty twenty four? So at a high level, we can't close the previous month until we've finished all of the, the financial transactions for that month. So a lot of our reporting will be letting the month close, so then we can actually report back on it. Especially at the end of the year, there are a lot of, um, adjustments that have to be made. There are things called accruals and deferrals. So we operate on a, um, a modified accrual basis of accounting. So towards the end of the year, expenses, uh, and revenues, we don't record things when they hit our bank account. We record expenses when they're incurred and revenues when they're guaranteed that they'll be coming in. So we're not posting things that were twenty twenty four expenses in twenty twenty five. We have to let those invoices come in and pay them and they may not come in till January or February of twenty five, but they're actually items that were budgeted for and paid for on, in the budget in twenty four. So we have to let those transactions actually come in. They hit our bank account, but they get posted to the year before because they're actually budgeted for in that year. So if you're wondering when we, when you're seeing presentations by different departments about budget versus what actually happened, period has to end and those transactions have to be reported in the correct period. So that's a big reason why you're gonna be seeing, well, twenty twenty four, we had to close twenty twenty four and post things that happened in there before you guys could see reports on it. Do you have questions?
I don't even know how to ask. Okay, that's a lot. So, uh, we're using the, we're not using the previous year's data to guide this year's decisions. We're approving the previous year's number.
So you're not, not approving them, but you're, we're going to look at where twenty twenty four came in.
Yeah.
Right, so for a majority, right, um, majority of all of our expenses, right, have already been paid and booked out in twenty twenty four. So for example, the first payroll in twenty twenty five, much to Candace's joy, crossed fiscal years.
Two years.
So part of it was twenty twenty four budget, part of it was the twenty twenty five budget, because we're on biweekly pay. So finance team's gonna work on those accruals and deferrals. Some of the invoices trickle in for, uh, expenses, and I think, what was the date you set for?
I think it was the four, it was the fourteenth, because I realized it was Valentine's Day. And I was like, if you don't have your invoices to leave by Valentine's Day, I'm coming for you.
Yeah, yeah. So, and then, so then, once we have, so then, we'll, we can look at what the twenty twenty four budget was and then what our actuals were, the money out the door. So we can look at, you know, vacancies, um, for positions across the departments. We can look at departments' professional services or their supplies and services line and be like, so you budgeted twenty K and you spent two. That informs me for the next year's budget or even looking at the twenty twenty five budget of where money can be taken from to meet commissioner priorities. So it's that, so, and, so that's what, that's Q one. Is reviewing the prior year. How did we end up?
Okay, reviewing is, I think, the key point, I would sort of.
Yep, and then.
The books or?
Yeah, and then it gives you guys the opportunity of being like, okay, well, so this department had five vacancies and didn't fill any. Do they need five vacancies? Or can we take away some or increase, increase the salary and they have two vacancies? Maybe attract candidates, right, things like that. But also gives the opportunity, right, to, to look at each department's budget, spending habits, where they're at. Because I would, I would much rather this, the guidance that they've given to staff since I started, like, I would rather your budget be over by five or ten percent than like under spend by like twenty or thirty percent. It's not, um, because in my mind, that twenty or thirty percent is money that the commissioners could have put towards their priorities, um, or something like that. So it's not a, I don't know, some people would, like when I started, were very proud of like, oh, I came in thirty percent under, and I was like, I could have used that money for something else. So we focused a lot with department directors on really setting those tight budgets.
You're saying that five percent over is common and encouraged?
No, not, not common, not encouraged. I'm okay with that.
Preferred over.
Preferred than you being twenty percent under budget, because.
If they go over budget, do they have to come out and say?
Yes, yep, and that is, that's part of the process, right? Incoming and justifying refers to Candace and I and then justifying to the board of why that department or that office is going to be over budget.
Why would they be over budget, say like, uh, you know? I can see lots of snow removal and stuff pushing guys over budget, right? What would be another example, let's say, over budget?
Well, I think, I think for the road and bridge one is a good one, if we do have a heavy snow year and we blow through Michael's overtime budget.
Inflation?
Inflation can play part of it, but that's why we look at those economic indicators to try and like, to budget for those things. It is a moving target and budgets do change. But, so those, those are, would be like the biggest ones. But, you know, if you're looking at personnel, each position has a salary range. So the department director knows that they can't go over that salary range or go over what was budgeted through HR and finance. You know, other things that could lead to something coming over budget is, uh, oh, I forgot. Pipes freeze in a building, right, and insurance only covers part of it. Or if you look at probably in, um, Michael's, uh, twenty four budget, because of the vandalism that was done at the library, the windows were broken three, kind of two times, right? Insurance covers part of it, but then we have to pay for some of it as well. So there, there are some of those things where things end up over budget. But those all come before the board. So we, using the library as an example, for example, we added money to the maintenance note to Brenna's budget, because the second time we replaced the windows after they were vandalized. And laying on the carpets, all of that, but the second time the windows were vandalized, we put the three M film, ballistic film over that. So that, um, and the film prevents if you throw a brick, shoot it, um, it keeps the glass encased in there. So it doesn't shatter all over the children's section and.
So you don't have to replace the carpet again.
Exactly, and go have, spend the staff time of going through every single child's book and cleaning it out, because every single one had glass in it.
That's a former children's librarian there, that breaks my heart.
Yeah, it was, it was very hard on staff. But those are some of the examples, but.
Sorry, not, the rest of the state doesn't always work on a calendar year like we do. So like our state printers, they run on fiscal years until I go into June thirty. So a lot of our state, or county departments that receive funding to operate from the state, right, they don't know what new money they're gonna get until midway through the year, so they're gonna have to make adjustments to your budget based on the state's budget. So you'll see a lot of changes within departments that July timeframe when they get their new budget from the state.
So certain these quarterly supplementals allow us the flexibility to roll with that.
Yep.
To answer Tim's question earlier, the fiscal year is defined for counties in the local government budget law, Colorado, not constitution. So it's statutory, we does maybe get our fiscal year runs January one to December thirty first. So you don't have any flexibility to change to make it easier to go to the state.
But there is an opportunity, because the state legislature meets January through the beginning of May. You know, right now, the state is hashing through how they're gonna cut, still a hundred billion dollars, uh, out of their budget. The first place they look is at Medicaid provider rates. So how much Medicaid reimburses, uh, providers, medical providers, uh, for medical care for Medicaid clients. The second place they look is at county admin. And so we are, like the Department of Human Services is kind of an extension of the state. So they provide us some admin dollars for county staff. But if we, if we solely used what the state provided for them, all of our eligibility techni, all of our case benefit managers would make probably about forty two K a year. So there's definitely room for advocacy for commissioners to, uh, pound our, uh, our state officials for, it's not that our, our budget.
Concerning if the state's, uh, numbers are in the state, the condition that, um, is being relayed at some of these meetings, then do. And if they kind of potentially have the, they have the potential to kind of yank the rug out from under us, if they pull that kind of funding from those departments, then are we gonna be on the hook to make up for the shortfalls as a county?
That would be the hard decision to make. So currently, you know, the general fund does contribute to the human services fund and the majority of that is to make up for salaries, to be able to pay folks a, a better wage.
Does that counted or approached as like an operating? Well, I guess it's not currently, because it's not even an operating expense yet, but what?
Well, that is operating.
It is, it is operating.
But well, it's potential, if they yank that funding out, it will increase our operating expenses.
Oh, yeah, I'm just saying that already, we already contribute, it's not allocated from the state. We take general funds and contribute it to our operating expenses.
For human services.
For human services.
Yeah.
But it would be more, is what Tim's saying, yeah.
Yeah. Is there an, uh, estimated outlook on grants from DOLA? Cause apparently that fund or whatever got raided to help balance the budget.
That, that is another place the state looks, is to take those mineral, um, um, call those, uh, the mineral tanks, uh, or severances, staying, um, another place the state looks. I will use your trust fund, another place the state looks.
But all that's considered in the budget? Or is there any way to look at these grants and say, hey, last year we got all these grants, this year we have planned, I don't know how much grants are dependent on, I imagine quite a bit. we have planned, I don't know how much grants are dependent on, imagine quite a bit.
We do have, um, we do have grants that do fund, um, some staff salaries, those staff are aware that they are grant funded, and that the, you know, funding. When the funding does end, right, it's, it's not a guarantee that they will still have a job. Um, that'll be at the discretion of the commissioners to continue to fund that position out of general fund dollars. Um, you know, grants for projects and things that we have, really the biggest one we have is wrapping up that the recreation center feasibility study. Um, there are a few other outline ones, but not like big, big dollar ones. So we try to be very careful with the grants that we do apply for, because on face value, right, a grant looks great. Whoa, half a million dollars for this. But then when you start to dig into it or look, look into everything, the grant reporting requirements, outcomes required of the grant tour, all of those kind of things, um, make grants less shiny. Q two?
Q two, April to June, um, B O C C votes on quarter two supplemental budget requests. Um, departments prepare memos comparing Q one budgeted versus actuals. Um, county manager prevents, presents an overview of the Q one budget. And then this would be when we'd start, um, giving directions for twenty twenty six capital improvement request instructions. Um, so if there are capital improvement requests, people know how um to request those, and also it clarifies what is a capital improvement request ver- versus what's just a normal operations budget request. We have a little confusion uh this last time, so making sure people know what is a capital improvement, you know, proving assets that we own, um, as a county versus just normal operations request. So there's a difference between supplemental budgets and actual capital assets that we're gonna continue to hold on to and improve. All right, quarter three, July to September, in August, um, uh, Tim will have had several work sessions with you guys, and will release the twenty twenty six budget guidance to staff so they can start to work on their budgets. Um, uh, Tim and I will meet with directors for, to start to help develop their twenty twenty six preliminary budgets. Um, departments prepare memos comparing quarter two budgeted with actuals. Um, and then you guys in September will be voting on quarter three supplemental request. Ooh. I'll let you get to it quickly.
All right, Q four.
All right, Q four, October to December, um, directors present twenty twenty six uh prelim budgets and department goals. Uh, an update to you guys. Um, the county manager's office presents the twenty twenty six payroll, supplies and services. Um, county manager's office will present no levy scenarios, um, so you guys can make, start to make some decisions about what you will vote on. Um, and this is also the time that our community partners with a lot of uh grant funded entities uh that have requests, and when we can, we fulfill those requests to support our community, um, for the twenty twenty six funding year. In November, um, we present uh the twenty twenty six updates to the budget to the B O C C. And in December, you guys will vote on the mill levy, um, and also uh adopt the budget. So there's a lot of back and forth before we arrive at the budget we've adopted.
Yep, and I think, and throughout this year, as we've worked through on like Q one, Q two, and Q three budget updates and budget supplementals, right, as we, um, work with you all on understanding the twenty twenty five adopted budget. So if you guys wanna change that budget, that is well within your purview, um, and that, those are good opportunities to, to make those changes as well.
All right, so funds, uh, and what we utilize here at Lake County is fund accounting. They are accounts used to record Lake County government's financial resources, obligations, and the balances of each of those funds. Uh, the county manages thirty funds divided into two categories, that's restricted and unrestricted. So unrestricted funds can be used for any purpose that aligns with, um, organizational priorities, goals, and policies. Uh, restricted funds, however, have specific conditions govern, governing their use. Um, and I added this last, but in general, a government should use the minimum number of funds necessary for sound financial management and to meet legal and accounting requirements. So we don't wanna just create a fund every time we have something new come up, we wanna ask ourselves, what are the funds that we have? And could this expense or revenue be a part of a fund that already exists? So an example is capital improvements fund. We don't want to create a fund for every single capital improvement unless it's a very complex capital improvement that has revenues coming in that have very strict federal regulations around them. So we want to kind of house capital projects under the capital improvements fund, not just create funds all over the place every time we have a new project. Um, it makes our accounting very challenging for people to understand. Um, and it really just sets uh the county up to have confusion when there's turnover in staff. No one really understands what lived in what fund, because we've got funds all over the place. So I would just caution you, if you're gonna create a new fund, have a real reason for it. And also ask, could we use a fund that already exists? And we can definitely give you guidance on that if you're not sure. We have a lot of funds, and we wanna be really conscientious to, to keep things as clean and straightforward as possible for ourselves and the people who are looking at our reporting.
Once a fund is established, is it possible to retract, or go back and wrap, put that under the umbrella of another fund? Like reduce the number of funds?
Yes.
Yeah.
Because, you know, the, the last sentence, and then thirty funds seem a little at odds with, odds with each other, but I don't know how many is too many or not, so I'm not really coming from experience on that, but.
Yeah, Candace, what do you think? How many should, how many would you recommend we try to reduce to? I think part of that is understanding the funds that we have, some of them are statutorily required, so we can't get rid of them, but some of them will be funds that as the project ends, we can retire those funds. Um, other opinions I have are that as we continue to work with our new auditor, who's very rigorous, which I love, um, getting some guidance about, okay, do we have funds that we've created because we just didn't understand funds? And how they specifically work from an accounting perspective? Could we combine some of these items into common funds? And at that point, I think we would have a discussion with you guys, say, hey, we've identified some funds that don't make a lot of sense for being separate. What are the opinions about, could we consolidate, or as the fund expires, if it's for a grant project, retire your funds?
So the overview of the audit under bank accounts, if they did identify.
We have a lot of funds.
That weren't uh being reconciled, and they identified that as an area of potential fraud. So are those being addressed or consolidated, or?
Sure, so at a high level, our treasurer has to reconcile every month, because we, so reconciliations are looking at your bank account and making sure whatever went into and out of your bank account happens uh in your accounting software. Um, because of the separation of duties, the treasurer is the recipient of funds, not accounting, um, protects against fraud. Um, so our accounting team is never reconciling to the bank. We are reconciling to the treasurer, who must reconcile to the bank on a monthly basis in order for us to reconcile to their reconciled books. I know that seems very circular, because it is. What is it? Yeah, it is a lot of reconciling. Um, so big things we're working on this year is historically that reconciliation is not happening on a monthly basis in the treasurer's office, and part of that is training and just understanding. Um, what's a little challenging is I, as the finance director, can't go in and train their staff or look at their uh accounting, you know, I'm separated by statute, and so we are using, um, a CPA who's worked with the county previously to help start to train on what that looks like. Historically, those reconciliations have happened at the end of the year by a third party who can look at everything, sounds magical to me. Um, because we, we just can't on our end, so we're a little bit at the mercy of the information we receive. So this year in particular, we are really working with, um, CPS accounting to make sure that they are reconciling on the monthly, so that we can be reconciled to them. Um, and reconciling doesn't mean that we've closed the books, like we can make adjustments, but that way every month we know, hey, whatever we received and went out the door matched what happened on the bank account without my team being able to actually look at the bank account. So there are some complex pieces.
So the reconciliation doesn't necessarily happen in your office?
It does, but we aren't reconciling to a bank account, we are reconciling to the treasurer, so that hinges on the treasurer's office being reconciled every month.
And do they have a full time or something that works on that constantly?
Yes, um, so the treasurer is, so the treasurer is deputy and then Erica. So with CBS accounting and Patrick's on board of this, of getting that training in motion, so we have those monthly reconciliations, so they, they reconcile, and then uh finance team can reconcile to their reconciliation.
But the goal is to have this accounting firm train everybody and then step back, so that we don't have
Yes.
twenty people doing reconciliation.
Yeah.
Or asking for outside help.
Yes. I would say too, it's probably CBS Christine is her name, that is also her goal, because she's retiring.
She's gonna retire.
She wants to retire?
Yeah, so we need, uh, we're, we're taking the, the brain dump from her and the training from her, and then training work papers.
She used to, she used to work here and.
No, she's always been a third party, um, provider.
I see.
Historically, she has reconciled the entire county's information at the end of the year. Which we don't want to be doing that.
Do they exactly, the audit, the interest statements?
Yes. Paying people.
Yeah.
At least paying people by months. So we just want to be, and it doesn't mean we're not recording expenses and revenues coming in, they're being recorded as they happen. But we need to have a little bit better flow of information between the treasurer about what's coming in, and that's a big thing we've worked on in the accounting department this past year and will be working on this year, making sure that when a revenue comes in, we don't see a hundred forty one thousand dollar deposit, and it's made up of fifteen different deposits, and we don't know what those deposits are for. They can't all say treasurer's receipts, that gives no guidance for us, or is that a grant revenue? Are those general fund dollars? So what we've been doing is really working with Patrick's team, who's been great to work with thus far, um, to make sure that they have the same accounting numbers as we do. So we know that when general fund dollars come in, they get recorded as general fund dollars, or if grant revenues for DHS or state funds for DHS come in, they get recorded that way on our end and on DHS's end. And I just think there hasn't been someone internally making that communication piece happen until recently. So that is a huge lift to make sure everybody's on the same page. So that's essentially what we are working on, really clean that issue and happen. Okay, so types of funds. Um, there are kind of three buckets that funds fall into, three groups. There are governmental funds, those are gonna be things like our general funds, special revenue funds, capital projects, permanent funds. Uh, that's where most of our governmental functions are accounted for. Uh, the acquisition, use, and balances of governments expendable financial resources and related current liabilities all tend to happen in this category. Um, so a lot of departments will have their own budget, they fall under general funds. Um, proprietary funds, and I'll explain a little bit more about enterprise funds and internal service funds for you on the next slide. Um, they're gonna be used to account for the government's ongoing activities, um, and those are similar to ones that are found in the private sector. So for example, the finance department, we have, when you look at our budget with us, we'll go through, here's our budget. You'll notice we don't have revenues budgeted, we are not charging people for our services, we're funded by the general fund. But we do have expenses, so we'll have budgeted out for you, these are the expenses we have, and they'll match the amount that we've been appropriated from general fund dollars. Versus road and bridge is gonna operate a little bit more, um, or public works, I'll say. Um, it's gonna operate a little bit more like a normal business, they're gonna have actual deliverables or like a water department. They're gonna charge people for the services provided, and they're gonna be primarily self-funded in a lot of cases. Um, fiduciary funds, those are funds that we have that we are really uh holding on to those assets in a trustee capacity. Um, so that'd be things like pensions, you're not spending people's pensions where we'd have them, we are just managing those, we don't own them. We're managing them till the person leaves, they retire, they get their, those funds back with, back from us, would be examples of fiduciary funds. Or investment trust funds, like a trust fund, we are not going and taking money from a trust that we hold. All right, so just a little difference between what a enterprise fund is, that's like I explained, a self-supporting government fund, they're selling goods or services, they're getting paid. They have expenses uh related, um, to a lot of the services they provide. An internal service fund, uh, that's used in governmental accounting to track goods and services that are shifted between departments uh on a cost reimbursement basis. So an example might be a risk management fund that's used to provide liability insurance, and it provides that insurance and workers' comp to a lot of different departments. Um, so internal service funds aren't like funding our normal operations. I show this picture because governmental funds can be a lot of different types of funds. Um, it can be our general fund or special revenue funds that we set aside for a specific purpose. Um, these can be permanent funds, um, like the mine closure funds that we don't wanna be touching. Or, uh, it can be capital projects funds, like funds we set aside, um, to improve the courthouse. All right, so I'm gonna, uh, make Tim catch it here, because I've just learned all of these funds recently, and I will give my best explanation for each one, and if there's questions I can thus far.
We're gonna go through all thirty?
We're gonna go through the most important ones, and we're gonna summarize the few that are left behind. So unrestricted funds, remember, there's no restrictions on what, you know, what we're using those for. So the general fund is the primary source for funding Lake County government. Uh, revenues come from property taxes, sales tax, sales tax, general fees, uh, charges and grants. Uh, the general fund is allocated across multiple needs and priorities, including but not limited to staff salaries and benefits. Um, additionally, all elected offices within Lake County government are supported by this fund. Funds are appropriated on annual budget or annual basis from the mill levy set by the B O C C. I'll just let you interrupt me if you have questions with my rankings. Statutory funds, funds that we are required by statute to have. The road and bridge fund, which is restricted for specific uses. Um, so it was established under Colorado revised statute. Uh, it is only for road and bridge construction, maintenance, and administration. As a restricted fund, uh, monies that we receive from the state or federal government only goes to expenditure on road and bridges. Its revenues come from specific ownership tax, highway user tax, and payments in lieu of taxes or health revenues, which are federal dollars distributed to us by the state. Um, the public health agency fund is restricted, um, also established under a Colorado revised statute. Um, any monies appropriated from a county general fund and any monies received from state or federal appropriations or any other gifts, grants, donations, or local fees for public health purposes are in this fund. The human services fund is also restricted, that means we can't just take human services dollars and pay people's salaries in other departments, or just anything of the nature. Um, that's also established by Colorado revised statute. All money appropriated by the B O C C, federal government, state department, or the Department of Early Childhood for public assistance and welfare-related purposes. Um, this fund is used for both the program and administrative management of human services. Enterprise funds, all right, these are all unrestricted, but these are the ones that kind of operate like a normal business. So the airport fund, uh, the authority to establish special revenue funds for the operation of county-owned airports is grant, is, um, granted under a Colorado revised statute. is grant, is, um, granted under a Colorado revised statute. The Leadville Lake County Airport generates revenues from fuel and merchandise sales, leases, general fees and charges and grants. This revenue is intended to cover the costs of operating and maintaining the airport. The landfill fund, um, establishes special revenue funds is granted by the B O C C under Colorado revised statute. Lake County landfill generates revenue from fees charged for the disposal of waste and recycling. This is intended to cover costs associated with operating and maintaining the lead, uh, the landfill. Water project enterprise fund is also unrestricted, um, and the authority to establish this fund is granted under a Colorado revised statute. It's for water activity enterprises to operate and finance water services and water facilities. The Lake County Water Project Enterprise generates revenue from general fees and charges. And this revenue is intended to cover the operating costs of the water project. Alright, and, and Leadville, we've got a couple of special funds that are really specific, um, to the area that we live in. The blood lead monitoring fund is restricted, um, and established by a Colorado revised statute. And this implements programs for prevention, remediation and monitoring of blood lead, um, levels in Lake County. The funds are received through an Asarco trust. The mine closure fund is restricted, uh, and was created by ballot measure one B. It was adopted by the voters of Lake County in two thousand eleven. Uh, and the mine closure fund has been created to sustain the county activities uh, if the valuation of the county, uh, declines and as a result of, uh, the closure of the mine. So funds are appropriated on an annual basis from the mill levy, uh, that you guys are setting. So you can determine, you know, outlook for when you think that might happen and how much needs to be put back each year when you certify the mill levies. Um, and then lodging tax fund, which is also restricted. One point nine percent are collected from all lodging establishments located in Lake County. Within the city of Leadville, ballot measure two A voted on and adopted in two thousand twenty-one. Uh, increased lodging tax on hotels, motels and short-term rentals within the city from one point nine two to four point nine two percent. And the tourism panel receives one point nine two percent of this accommodations tax for the community focus where the tourism panel, including the Friends of Lake County and the Community Support Program. The remaining three percent, um, accommodation tax from measure two A is allocated to the Leadville Lake County Regional Housing.
Is that mandated, the tourism panel receives one point nine two percent?
Yeah. And I'm just, for the blood lead, for the Asarco trust, so when, uh, Leadville and Lake County was first declared a super fund site, part of that was the Asarco, um, the former mining and smelting company. It's part of their cleanup duties had to create this trust fund for us. Uh, mine closure funds, as Candace said, right, was voted on, uh, by folks. Uh, it is an interesting ballot measure. We'll see, see what shakes the next couple of years for Lake County's economy, but as we become less and less dependent on the mine, uh, for operating, it's no longer like seventy-five percent or half of our general fund budget, it's a quarter.
Yeah.
About a quarter of our budget now, revenues, um. So that ballot language is, you know, drastic valuation, if, if, uh, after the county, drastic valuation decline in the county. So I don't know how you define that, but just something to keep in the back of your mind. But I'd have to someday go back to voters to actually ask to spend that money, um.
It's roughly five hundred thousand is all in that account?
No, there's, uh, three point five million in there, so we, uh.
That's collecting interest.
Yep.
There's an invested?
Yep. So the treasurer manages the county's investments. Um, so there is an investment policy, um, that guides, um, the treasurer and provides opportunities for that. Um, so, yeah, so all those are, a lot of money is invested.
Did he buy any of our COPs?
He did not, we're not allowed to buy our homes.
Other special funds are the capital acquisition fund. Um, and this, uh, was established by the V O C C under Colorado revised statute. The capital acquisition fund was created in two thousand sixteen and is intended to cover the cost of capital purchases. Funds are appropriated on an annual basis from the mill levy set by the V O C C. Um, so as our county is looking at the assets we have and work that we might start to see and put to spend a day together talking about, uh, assets we currently have and capital asset improvement planning. Uh, because we're so sick of talking to you. We're gonna take a look at that together and this will be something to be mindful of is knowing what the goals are in when setting the mill levy. Um, recreational capital acquisition fund, um, this one was also created in two thousand sixteen and intended to cover the costs specifically of recreation facilities. Um, and then the grants fund, which is restricted. Um, this is special revenue funds created by I C R S. The fund manages all federal, state and privately sourced awards in accordance with federal regulations. And a lot of the restrictions on those funds are grant-specific. So we, um, really, it's very important for us to document, know what grants we have, know what requirements are for the grant before we accept a grant and then be tracking those grants appropriately and reporting them. Are the, sorry, those last, the first two, did the V O C C create those? I get that they're, were allowed to create them, but did we specifically create them?
I think yes, for cap act and I think for the, um, recreation cap act one, I, if I remember correctly, um, from former commissioners, the recreation capital acquisition fund is created. I mean, we almost spent a whole week without saying for the pool. And then I think the intention for the capital acquisition fund, you know, it is allowed for counties to create this, set that money aside for those larger capital purchases. Um, so as Candace talked about, you know, there might be a way under, you know, say, road and bridge or landfill, piece of heavy equipment, like, be under those budgets instead of in this capital acquisition fund. And then the grants fund is, you know, where we house our grants.
So just help me know if I'm getting this story right. So the last V O C C and maybe even the one before it was putting money aside, like not spending the whole mill levy, not using the whole mill levy that they were taking. And they were trying to put money aside, but I thought they were putting aside in the general fund to be able to someday start working, working on these, um, deferred maintenance projects, especially the justice center. Am I correct that they were doing that just through the general fund or were they actually putting that money into the capital acquisition fund?
For the justice center, you know, the courthouse renovation, that was through the general fund.
Okay, but they could have used this. Or why didn't they not?
Um.
Restricted.
Thank, well, pardon me, okay, so when you put something into a restrict, a restricted fund, right, you were saying this is for this.
Right.
When you, kind of, when you park something in the general fund or build up that reserve, um, as you guys see now, that is your curfew to oversee. So if, um, you know, the intention of a former board, it's all one and great, but they're not the decision-makers anymore.
Right.
Um, so good question, I don't know why things weren't put in the capital acquisition fund, but from my understanding of the capital acquisition fund, I think some of the statutory guidance on it is for more trending towards like those pieces of equipment compared to facilities, even though it's still a capital cost.
Okay.
For the rec one, um, I believe, you know, the intention was, uh, starting, um, probably in two thousand sixteen as to build up a fund for something, for like the aquatic center. Also just said that. Um, but, uh, you know, then the previous board, uh, shifted gears.
Mm-hmm.
Didn't want to do that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, yeah. Well, there's a way, you know, there's a way to save money, like say for, right, we just re-turfed community field. Cool, now we have a decade to save up money to re-turf it in a decade.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so there's, there's other, there's ways to do it, we could use the rec capital acquisition fund. Or there's ways we can do it within, like the general fund or within the pros and cons of it.
But a reason to put it into the, say, let's use the turf field. A reason to put it into the rec capital acquisition fund is that say, we want to build up money to get to that, but that would be spent two and a half commissioner seats from here. And so to make sure that we're actually building towards those things and it can't get derailed by, until it needs to be purchased, we could use that as like, I know this is a long-term investment, we need to make sure that we're building towards that, would we use these other funds?
Yes, and, but then you have to be very like intentional, right, when we're putting, when you guys put the money into a fund like that. This money is dedicated to that, because part of, as Chris talked about, you can't bind future boards. So then a future board would have to come and say, they would have to come in and undo all of those resolutions for setting that money aside to do that. But you also kind of set up future boards for success, right?
Right, yeah.
Hey, we set aside this money for you so you can re-turf the field.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks. So the insurance fund, I promise we don't go through everyone, I know it seems like we are right now. So the insurance fund was created in two thousand sixteen. Um, and this is a fund specifically to support certain types of, um, insurance, including but not limited to, um, casualty, property, uh, pool and liability. Um, these are appropriated on an annual basis from the mill levy. Um, and clearly, you know, how much you guys set aside would partially be dictated by how much insurance costs. Um, E nine one one authority, and that's a restricted fund. And this was created through an, uh, intergovernmental agreement between Lake County, the city of Leadville and the hospital. Um, the board of directors is comprised of representatives from Leadville, Lake County Fire Rescue and the Leadville Police Department and St. Anthony's Ambulance Service and the Lake County Office of Emergency Management and Sheriff's Office. And this is support, to support nine one one and dispatch services. Each I D A partner contributes annual funding to sustain the authorities' operations. And then the urban renewal authority, or L O R A, fund was established under Colorado revised statute. And I do encourage you, you can look up any of the Colorado revised statutes to see the language about what the restrictions are. Since we say these are restricted, it's partially why they're in there. Not the lightest reading, but if you're ever questioned, it does kind of outline what you can and can't do. Um, and this allows urban renewal authorities to manage revenues tied to urban renewal projects. Um, such as property tax increment financing or T I F revenues, you see that on the access report. Um, this fund supports redevelopment, infrastructure improvements and initiatives to eliminate blight and promote economic development within designated urban renewal areas. So funding for L O R A comes from contributions by each taxing entity in, um, the, uh, county based on the T I F amount. All other funds, yay. The remaining fifteen funds for the county reflect a variety of specialized funds, like the Mineral Belt Trail Fund and the Search and Rescue Fund.
And some of those funds are, like, historical ebbs and flows in this community. So search and rescue is actually sits under the sheriff's office, it's part of his statutory, like, authority. Um, search and rescue does receive some general fund dollars. That's in the sheriff's budget. Search and rescue has a, their own fund through their C three and C four. One of those. C three, uh, at the community fund, receive donations and grants that way. So we don't really need a search and rescue fund anymore. Um, Mineral Belt Trail, I think, you know, we'll see transition this year with the founder of the Mineral Belt Trail, um, in that. And then working with Duncan and Rec Advisory Board, kind of, what do those things look like? And then how for the funds that were dedicated for the Mineral Belt Trail, like revenues from the lava and things like that. Alright, they should go to the Mineral Belt, but does it need its own specific thing, you know? So some of those kind of things.
They have a large fund balance over, well, over a hundred thousand.
Yeah.
It's just been sitting on it. And so how much, just how much can we direct that hundred thousand or is that Mineral Belt Board that decides how to spend that money? Or do we have the authority to do that?
Uh, ultimately, the board, you guys, county commissioners, have the authority. What has been done, you know, in the past is, you know, for anything related to Mineral Belt, so up, updating the signs this year. Um, any other like minor expenses, um, you know, that the Mineral Belt should let.
The website.
The website, um, those kind of things, right, have been, you know, approved by the Mineral Belt Trail Committee and then paid out of that fund. But you know, at the end of the day, um, down to you guys. But I think we'll, we'll, there's an opportunity this year to, to really flesh out what those look like, um, it's a change, changing target.
They've got all that money, I wonder if there's any, does it have to be repaid in ten years or?
Yeah, so Michael will be able to talk, uh, about that, because I, I can't remember the last time it was repaved or patched, you told me at one point, but. But yeah, so larger expenses like that, um, you know, I think all of us have seen, you know, our plan was to lose. And, you know, so setting aside money for that, those happen, I don't know. Um, but yes, for general maintenance upkeep, uh, the warming shelters, wind shelters along the way, um, things like that. But with the county also, um, you know, we, we do some of those maintenance things throughout the year as well.
And C and C.
And C and C, yeah.
So what's the plan, Candace, are we gonna have like, are you hoping to have a bigger work session with us? So that we can actually go through all of these, talk about validity and.
I, I think that will have to happen if we think that we might want to reduce some of the funds. My hope is to speak with our last auditor, because he, he did mention the number of funds is a lot. And just kind of identify some areas so that we have, you know, guidance about, okay, where, where could we maybe consolidate some? And just to really more than anything, be more intentional when we create them. Because this really needed, especially restricted funds, you want to be cautious because you do restrict what you could do with them going forward. And so we don't just want to create funds that, you know, sit there and go unused when we have items that need to be refurbished or redone. So I think just to be a little more intentional and have a bigger discussion on, okay, does this really constitute a new fund? I think it's just a little bit of an education moment about when a fund is constituted and, and we will have more sessions, hopefully, to, you know, some of these things down.
Yeah.
Who has, who has access to the funds and are would the auditor say, you know, this fund could, could facilitate fraud? And is that being addressed and, and what would be, what would be?
Oh, so none of our funds are, are like a fraud problem. It just makes the recording and reporting a lot more challenging. And as staff turn over, uh, I love you all, but I'll retire someday. The person coming in behind me will have to understand why did they create this fund, what is it restricted for, and why did it sit here? And there's, you know, just changing people, you know, always. And so you just want to be super clear with your funds and make it as straightforward as possible. You don't need a fund if you could use a general fund accounting, uh, chart of accounts code to account for something you received and the expenses related to it, unless you just really need the fund. Like blood lead, that requires a fund, it's a statute, if you don't get to pick that, it's all it can be used for. We just want to not create them unless we have real reasons like that to do so.
Steph, do you feel like your question was answered?
Um, yeah, I mean, I guess, uh, I'm worried that since the auditor said that these funds could be, you know, used in fraud, I'm wondering what's the easiest way to do that? Not that I'm looking to do that, but have we identified areas where that maybe occurred?
I don't.
And the reason I ask is, is because a lot of the community members think that we're all corrupt. And so I guess I need, for my own peace of mind and also to send them to say that, I'm like, hey, there's all. hey, there's all these internal controls now, maybe that was
Yeah.
something that was a problem in the past and maybe there was fraud, but how do I assure people that?
I don't think the number of funds is why there was any comment regarding that. I think the biggest um issue that was identified is that as a county, we've all not necessarily had a central hub.
Mm-hmm.
And grants tracking was really the, the biggest problem. And if you think about it, the finance department was two people. And different departments were applying for different grants and reporting the tracking of those grants. And whether those grant funds were received or not wasn't well communicated. So really what this is, is an opera, and this is two years ago, mind you, the audit that we just finished. The big thing that this highlights is that we need to have better policies. And we just, we're about to go over policies. We've just created a lot of them and we wanna make sure we're utilizing our policies as tools to help us get the communication pieces we need. So what can't happen is that, I'll just take an example, um, pro single. Let's just say that department. Um, if they go apply for a grant and finance never knows they applied for the grant and we're receiving those revenues and recording them as general funds. And then we have pros report that they expensed so much money and it's a reimbursement grant, we're getting reimbursed for those, and we never record, hey, these expenses were related to this grant and we received money to reimburse those expenses. Well, that's a problem. And I think that is the biggest spot that we had some issues in the twenty three audit, is that there was just not a great communication piece for, for, between finance and other departments. So when those things didn't get recorded correctly, well, it looks like we received revenues, but we didn't get rid of the receivable on our accounts. Um, and part of that is just that we're developing as a, a community. You know, Tim's come on board. We've tried to really centralize the finance piece. But it's just a lack of great communication and record keeping historically.
Um, I know we're making so many strides in the right direction. Um, and also they brought up that, you know, we'll probably be sitting down again to go over some of this in finer detail. Cause it's a lot and, you know, I'm like, oh man, trying to absorb as much as I can. But, um, can we add to that next meeting for us? Um, how to, touching on what he said, how best we can um explain some of the shortcomings of the past, what we're doing to remedy them in the future, so that we are armed with a way to communicate better to the community, cause
Absolutely.
It, it, it's really hard to understand a lot of this.
Yeah.
You know, and, and right now it's my job. So if someone else who's out there working a full-time job and I try to explain this, it's gonna be even harder. So I'd like to try to figure out a kind of the verbiage and a good way to explain to the community, hey, here's what, you know, here's, here's where we made bad stuff. What you just explained was basically like, here's what we did wrong in the past. Here's what we're changing moving forward, and this is how it's gonna help us
Yeah.
be more accountable to the community and your tax dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we can work on that. And I think even, um, the organization itself in three years has changed drastically. Um, has become more professional, has become more responsive instead of reactive. Um, and it is, it's extremely hard, especially at this organization, I, I would say, before you talk, ladies, for folks listening, it's extremely hard at this organization to commit fraud. There are only certain people who can cut checks. There are only certain people who can sign checks. Everything that is reviewed within the finance department goes through several layers of review. Even before that, it goes through review at departments, right? Issues that are flagged are brought to Candace's attention, and if needed, go to my attention. And that's for even like a P card transaction of five dollars or something, you know, that's much bigger. Um, I would suggest too, for the new board, if you guys have an Amazon Prime or borrow someone's login, you should watch the documentary. Borrow money.
What, what documentary?
It's called All the Queen's Horses. It's not about Queen Elizabeth. It is about the finance director in a small town in Throned Regent's hometown.
Illinois.
Illinois.
Stay on the back.
It's about, it is about.
She's a big horse. Can't remember the town. She had racehorses.
Oh, yes, yep, yep, sorry.
Yes, if you remember.
Watch that, and you will understand why we have made all of the changes we have done here to prevent that.
We don't have any more people working out racehorses out here.
Yeah, no, we're also not that sophisticated. We're smart, but we're not that sophisticated, it's my.
And to be really honest, the conversation with the auditor was the planning needed and the knowledge of accounting needed on our county's behalf historically to have committed fraud did not exist. There is no evidence suggests, to suggest anything other than a lack of understanding of tracking of grants and accounting is all that our audits suggest. And it's a big notion that the policies that you've created and are really important. And my ask would be just that as we refine our policies, that you fully support us in implementing them. Change is hard and people aren't excited when I have to reach out about the P card policy and say, hey, no, this is what's required, and if you don't do this, this is what happens next. Um, cause that is really challenging when it hasn't been that way historically. So your support and thought and when we uh review our, our policies and processes is really appreciated.
Again, I just wanna speak personally from a tourism panel point of view. For five years, like the tourism panel leverages a lot of grants. We have opportunity to access all sorts of grants through OEDIT. And a lot of them are matching, some of them are fully funded, some of them are regional with other counties. And, um, we had a treasurer who reconciled every single month's reports because the county treasury, or the county finance department was not, like, did not understand what to do with our grant money and would put it into the wrong places all the time. And by the end of the year, it could kind of get cleaned up, like the, we could get reconciled. But, um, the, the finance department's reports were never aligned with our internal reports. And we felt like we had to keep internal reports out of, you know, our fiduciary duty. But it wasn't until the end of the year that we could be like, okay, thank God we got to the same. But like, thank God the bank account says the same thing. Because where finance was putting our grant money was all over the place. Sometimes not even into our, into the correct budget. So I just wanna say, I've seen this from the outside.
Yeah.
And it's been incredibly frustrating. And I can't, and it always felt frustrating that we could never solve it, no matter
Yeah.
how many times we went in and sat down. It just never, it never got there. So I'm really hoping that in our tenure, we can actually see it resolve.
I think a big piece of that is that when funds come in, which they do not come into finance, they come into the treasurer's office, that they have to be reported with a level of detail that makes it clear where those funds are destined.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, because we can only record what we are the recipients of.
Well, and are you all working on the same line items now too? Because that also is your role.
So that's a big thing, is knowing that a grant exists, making sure that the revenues align with the expenses for that particular numbered fund.
Yes.
Has been a really big part of the work. And mind you, I'm like eight weeks in, if even, I don't think I'm eight weeks in. But that is a huge piece of what we're working on, is that communication between, okay, treasurer, we know we've got grant funds coming in. We know from this department that they submitted for reimbursement. We're expecting X dollars. They have to, we have to know that those X dollars came in for this grant so that it can be reported appropriately. So I do think it's within the realm of possibility in the time that you guys are in place. But it's also gonna take a huge lift to get everyone communicating. And that's really one of my big goals, is to have a monthly meeting with every department head, which is very time-consuming, to start to say, okay, what grants do we have? What have we applied for? What does this look like and why we created a grants policy? So we're not all working off of like a different framework for what's happening.
Right.
Hmm, this is like the most government efficiency opportunity. So just from the outside perspective, I'm sure we'll find one of that. It's been easy to see it over the last years.
It's my gosh.
Sorry.
We're not, we're not.
Just, we still have a lot to get through, sorry. Um, so we're about to talk about the budget. We're gonna look at what we, the twenty twenty five budget. So I just wanna explain a few buckets of revenues that we received and a few of the different like types of expenditures you would see. Um, so taxes, and then just revenue granted from tax levies on the sale of goods and surfaces, sales tax, and on real estate properties, property tax. It's our primary source of funding. Um, licenses and permits, that's income derived from issuing permits or licenses, such as construction, business operations, special events licenses. Intergovernmental, uh, revenues, those are funds received from other government agencies like federal or state subsidies, or reimbursements for shared programs or services, like travel for services. Um, charges for service, uh, these are revenues that are collected because we've actually, um, provided services as a county. Those would be like utilities fees, recreational facility usage fees, and other public services. Uh, fines, those are revenues accrued for punishment or, uh, legal infractions like traffic violations, code enforcement penalties, and other offenses. Um, grants and contributions, funding or contributions provided by external organizations, individuals, or institutions to support, uh, specific county programs, projects, and operations. Uh, disposition of assets, that's income from selling county-wide assets like vehicles, equipment, and properties that are no longer needed. Interest income, these are revenues earned from interest or dividend, dividends on the county's financial investments, such as savings account or bond holdings. Uh, transfers in, those are funds transferred from one county fund to another to support specific operations, programs, or projects. Um, and then miscellaneous, um, this is income that does not fit into a defined category, often a one-time irregular sources. Um, I will note that miscellaneous revenues, and you're gonna see a category other um, that as, in regard to expenses. One of the big things we've really been working on in the accounting department is as we're reviewing accounts receivable, giving people guidance. Sometimes when people don't know where to record a revenue or the appropriate place for an expense, it goes into miscellaneous or other because they just don't understand where it logically should live. And so we're really trying to, through our AP process, review those invoices and help give people guidance when they don't know where it goes or if it's easier to say other, cause I don't wanna go look for it, so that I really guide them. Other is not correct in this instance. You need to recode it correctly. So do know that we anticipate miscellaneous and other category shrinking as we continue to grow.
Oh, yes.
Um, so this is our general fund revenues. And I came into the last two weeks of the, um, budget development this year. So I'm mainly on Tim to answer any very in-depth questions you may have. Um, so this kind of gives you a breakout of the different, uh, dollar amounts that we expect to see coming in in each of these categories. And I'll give you a minute to look and just ask some questions.
Taxes made up of property and sales tax. Um.
Do you know about how that slice of pie is split up? I mean, it's majority property tax, correct?
Yep, so take, uh, five and a half million off of the twenty.
Okay.
So about, yeah, so fourteen five-ish is, um, property.
So three quarters, yeah.
Does the mine have a substantial property tax bill?
There's, yes. Um, and there's, and, uh, we will provide you guys with the breakout of that. But I believe, so out of the fourteen million in property tax, I think the mine is four, maybe, maybe almost five million.
That tax bill doesn't go away when they, if they close, they're still gonna pay their property tax.
They still have to pay their property tax, but what happens is, is, um, of the heavy equipment, that possessory interest, all of them, that stuff goes, yeah. Um, and then if it's not an active or producing mine, they still pay property taxes on it, but it's no longer.
No severance.
Um, yeah, the severance tax and then classify it as, um, uh, I can't remember the assessment code, that it's, um, called, mining, the, the mining.
Mining by proceeds.
Well, mining by proceeds, but, but mines are, uh, assessed at a different tax rate. So when it's an active mine, if it's an inactive mine, it goes to a different, uh, assessment rate.
Does it not work as much?
Exactly. And then, and keep in mind too, we also have another active mine in the community, um, Titan A U, the gold mine. Um, that kind of by the southern fire station, County Route ten area. Um, so they pay taxes as well, not as much as Climax obviously, but.
Do we have the same kind of estimates and, um, sort of crystal ball as to how long that's gonna operate, what they've got coming up, or when it's all gonna be underwater?
Um, probably not be underwater, um.
Don't they wanna flood that valley?
I thought they're gonna flood it, yeah.
Well, Rora's been saying that for thirty years.
That is, yeah.
So someday, um.
I think the neighbors are pretty annoyed with the
The gold mines, yeah.
hours of operating, and the sound, and the noise, and the dust.
Yeah. Yeah, um, but we can ask, uh, Anne on, on that, cause she would have a better idea, uh, with their conditional use permit and things like that. And then, uh, the nice thing is, is about our assessors, is he likes to go on drives throughout the county and noticed all the heavy equipment they have out there that's not declared in the possessory interest.
Hmm.
Love it.
Um, yeah, um.
Well, how is that a mistake?
Oh, yeah, okay.
How is that not claimed? Like, when you claim something on your taxes, but on your federal taxes, how does that not come to us? Is that a silly question?
I don't remember the silly, but it's, um.
Like, cause there's no, there's no downstream obligation between the higher-ups to notify local officials.
To tell you.
Yeah.
If there are other federal agencies engaged, then there are cost obligations between federal agencies. But not there are any obligation that's downstream. They may be upstream, but we're required to report up, but I'm not aware of any that are required them to report down to us.
On your state income taxes, or on your state taxes, you wouldn't have to claim those?
Well, no, you, it would inform your taxes, your corporate taxes and stuff, would have to have those schedules on there.
Yeah, right. Right.
Yeah, so, but again, I'm not aware of downstream reporting downstate either.
Yeah, okay. Love it.
Yeah.
Super helpful. I think I missed remarking wanting to go on drives.
Mm-hmm. Go with them, I'm sure it'll be a blast.
So many drives to take with people.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Um, any other questions, I'll be generalifying, we'll, we'll wait for Commissioner Bullock, but.
Where, if like the community wanted to find this, is it findable on our website?
Yes, um, so these, um, so it is, I believe this is in our budget book. Is the pie chart in the budget book?
The pie chart is not, so it's quite, so this information is in the twenty twenty five budget book.
Okay.
It's just presented in a different format. However, this pie chart, or something super close to it, is on the December thirteenth work session, um, which is posted, uh, when you go to the twenty twenty five adopted budget. And then we have the previous iteration, um, from the October fifteenth, so.
And we are posting all of these presentations as well.
That is correct.
So, um, this is on, on the commissioners' page. I see those kind of tabs at the top for meetings, agendas, that kind of stuff. There's one that says onboarding. We can rename it whatever you want. But all of the presentations that we'll be doing will be there as well.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I suppose.
Yeah.
Um, you might have explained this already, uh, could you elaborate on transfers?
Sure, so transfers are, um, those are transfers in, uh, to the general fund. So, um, human services, public, or no, not human, sorry, that was a bad example. Um, transfers in from other, um, well, other funds, but other, other, um, other sources, um. How would I explain that?
Like a state allocation.
Wouldn't be our brands. Yeah, but if we break that out, it wouldn't be in the general fund.
Oh, right.
Um, so the transfers in.
It's not grants, is it? Like once they come to fruition and get?
Uh, yeah, some grants would come to general fund, um, and then other, you know, like transfers from, um, uh, federal or state government for certain programs that aren't designated to those specific programs.
Okay.
We can break. We can break out what the transfers are for you.
Cool, it sounds like a tricky one, so thanks for explaining that.
Okay, expenses, um so one of our biggest expenses is is personnel, that's wages, overtime, holiday pay. Employee wellness programs and incentives provided to staff as part of their total compensation package. Uh training, that's just expenses related to professional development, including training, transportation for training events and membership dues or subscriptions to industry organizations. Uh this includes local travel unrelated to training. Professional services, so this is when we have to hire external professionals, professionals like attorneys, surveyors, appraisers. Uh consultants or other specialized contractors that have certified expertise. And services, this is uh expenses for telephone, utilities, advertising, legal notices, rental services, maintenance agreements. Uh vehicle maintenance, building repairs, exterior building maintenance, equipment rentals and transportation for local day-to-day operations. Supplies, so this would be like operating supplies, operating materials, fuel, tires, shop supplies, postage, clothing allowances for staff. And then other, this is license fees and other expenses that don't fit into defined categories. And I will say, we're kinda giving you a high level overview, of course, within services, we have things broken out to different uh general ledger accounts. So you wouldn't see vehicle maintenance necessarily being recorded in the same place that telephone or utilities get recorded. We're just lumping this into kind of services that we provide for the county for the purposes of showing you guys kind of buckets of where funding lives. We definitely account for it at a little bit more of a granular level.
General fund expenses, so majority you will see this theme through every budget that is presented. Uh personnel uh is the largest category, personnel is how we get things done and provide services to the community. Whether if it's driving to greater, um you know, being in the treasurer's office, assessor's office, me, your guys' salaries as well, um are in there. So you can see as we we have trended better over the past couple of years on professional services as we've evaluated staff salaries and being able to hire. Higher skill set and better experienced people. So um as we hire, as we hire better folks, that professional services um piece of the pie will go down. Because we don't need to rely on that outside expertise, we have it internally.
Is there any direct examples um that you can think of and no worries if not, but of where we've actually saved money by expanding staff?
Yes, yes.
That I that I can, yeah.
There, there's one, a county attorney, um creating uh dedicated water staff. So in twenty-three and twenty-four, we did expend a lot on water engineers, water council, legal council, uh things like that. Now having a dedicated water staffer, we do not need to rely on that outside expertise um as much. Their Bryce will still need, you know, sometimes going through Chris to check with water council on certain things. Um or working with our water engineer on certain like technical aspects, but so there there's another example, um. Uh let's see, bringing. Liz on board has uh increased our IT budget. But it is now better managed than it ever has been before. And years of deferred maintenance on IT assets from wireless access points to hardware, software, all of that is now much better managed and tracked. Um and is on an actual cycle, so we we can really um calculate and project those budgets.
Being able to do more and do it more efficiently is holds a monetary value as well.
Yes, yes it does. Liz has been our teams guru and has built out teams as a platform for us to use to share our work, shared documents, packet materials, all of that kind of stuff. So yeah, so having everything right there is thanks to Liz. Quite for. Sorry. Yeah, sorry, um. Uh cuz prior prior to that, prior to that, it was it was me working with a shared document with the commissioners. Um so it's now definitely the highest and best use of my time um to do that. Um. Let's see. Who else? You're the big one.
Um, well, like Tim said, there are there are probably a number of different areas where we've looked at bringing stuff.
CPD. Yeah.
Yeah, CPD is a a big one in terms of hiring that expertise to not happen to rely on outside counsel, which. Um Tim also included an additional outside attorney to help with with those matters too. And so pretty much now, I think we're able to do the majority of that work in-house. There are still some specialized services that they need um in terms of, you know, like survey reviews, certain entitlement reviews and stuff like that. Or additional services that uh they don't have in-house.
In which community planning and development, being able to bring on an additional planner, very seasoned, very inexperienced planner. Um has been able to reduce um the outside outside review costs of sending things out to be reviewed by Schuenskoda. So Melissa Kendrick has helped reduce that cost and then bringing on a code enforcement officer has helped with that. So we don't rely on Schuenskoda to provide that uh code enforcement or checking. So the and as we're we're working on trending down with Schuenskoda, um so Schuenskoda is our third-party vendor for community planning and development. That does building permit uh review, building inspections, that kind of stuff. So if we, hopefully this year, Anne's goal is to be able to hire a local building inspector. So then that we, so then the money that we pay to Schuenskoda gets to stay with the county. So when you come and pull a building permit, seventy-five percent of that gets passed on to Schuenskoda. We want to keep that revenue.
And that would be a pretty even trade-off or even in our best interest monetarily?
Yes, and uh you'll see that when Anne presents her budget because she, you know, there is a lot of revenue for building permits and all the other associated permits, about like seven hundred K.
Okay.
So instead of passing along seventy-five percent of that, if we could keep the one hundred percent of that, you would have a department that is less reliant on general fund dollars.
Okay, that's great, cuz I do in the budget, you see where we pay outside.
Yeah.
Of area vendors, large sums of money that if anything could be shifted to locals, you know, here, it would be.
Yeah, yeah.
And and, yeah, and I'll just say in terms of like you'll see professional services in in county attorney's budget too. And that's because in some instances, especially having to do with water and environmental, those are such highly technical areas. That it's actually more cost-effective to continue using our outside special counsel for those services. Instead of us trying to learn those specialized areas of the law, if if we don't know certain areas already. And also the HS, they have a dedicated um attorney who handles like their child and adult welfare type cases, child support cases and stuff like that.
Your stuff that's outside your wheelhouse.
Yes, exactly. Or even if we have some wheelhouse, if it's gonna be more time cost-effective for them to do it versus us.
Yeah, like child welfare, you have to go to court quite often.
All the time.
And that I don't think the issue couldn't be able to do.
Yeah.
Yeah. The county work.
We can, and that's in for litigation stuff, you'll see, you know, depending on the nature of the litigation, we typically will engage outside counsel for that. If it's an insured matter, the insurance carrier will assign defense counsel for that. If it's something else, again, it it we look at it from the perspective of what is the most cost and time-effective um way to approach the issue.
Okay, thanks for all the extracurricular questions being answered, I know it's really stretching things out here for you guys, but I appreciate it.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, that's what we're here for.
Yeah. They're great questions, Andy.
Thanks, buddy.
Policies, these are all relatively new. Um they're all posted on our Lake County government website. And um they're the cash fund, procurements and contracts policy, purchasing card policy, travel reimbursement policy, grant policy and general fund reserve policy. Um and I will give you a heads up, I plan to do some workshopping around a few of these. We needed to have a policy in place, but also wanna have policies that we know of someone who owns the receiving, the information they're receiving. And also um since they're new, sometimes you find sticking points where maybe it's not clear. Part of that is working with um different departments to understand, but also just really um trying to make it cohesive. Like these are our policies in one document instead of referencing different documents is a really big goal of mine. So everything lives in one policy, there's one signature panel, it's almost like a handbook of what to do in terms of policies. So that is a really big item that I would like to work on this year. So we're gonna at a high level review what we have in place, um knowing that we're gonna continue to refine and make these better this year. And every year, I'm sure, is different things come up. So the cash fund policy, this governs the use and management of cash funds that are not under the management of the county treasurer. Um but these are necessary to expedite miscellaneous purchases that can't be effectively handled through the regular procurement process. Or through using a county issued purchasing card, call it P card. And so these would, a cash fund is just a change fund, petty cash fund or empress cash account. A change fund is just established by a department, division or office uh to advance money to a responsible party for the purpose of making change. For small business transactions made within that department. So an example um would be like gold, they have people who rent skates and you might need to make some change for for people who are renting their skates. Small things of that nature. And petty cash fund, uh that's a small fund established to allow for cash payments of minor incidental expenses. Uh such as emergency office supplies, um although I don't know that we have a lot of petty cash funds for that right now. We're really trying to streamline our purchasing.
Yes.
And an empress cash account, and this is just a bank account that's established by a county office or department. Other than the treasurer for paying for routine but minor operating expenses. And I think maybe the S O S officers or nine-one-one might have something of that nature.
Yeah.
Am I correct in saying that?
I think that would be the the one area where it is.
Yeah. And next please, our procurement policy, um and and this is one that I think took a lot of work, but still needs some refining. Is we do not have a procurement department. Um the stewardship of public funds is a fundamental responsibility of Lake County government. Uh the public needs to have confidence over where a public fund, public funds are spent, that they're spent prudently and transparently on their behalf. With proper planning and evaluation in a manner that is open and equitable to all. So the procurement and contracts policy sets forth guidelines, authorization levels and procedures for how the county purchases goods and services. Uh it's meant to maximize the county's purchasing power. Um while simultaneously ensuring organizational effectiveness, efficiency, accountability and equitable treatment of all employees and elected officials. And so at a high level, we've established dollar amounts. Who can authorize uh expenditures up to those dollar amounts? And kind of the procurement procedure that these items fall into. So that someone just wanting to purchase something small up to, you know, just under a thousand dollars doesn't take. Uh B O C C approval to get, say we need a new desk, I just made something up. Um it's not the same as if someone is buying a brand-new piece of equipment that needs to be, you know, accounted for and depreciated. That's like over fifteen grand would require B O C C approval before they could purchase. And then, of course, you guys approve things in the budget that are budgeted, but still we wanna have some oversight of even if something's budgeted. For someone's budget that we're asking those questions. And that's part of um who can authorize the expenditure that finance, if we see a purchase, we make sure it really was budgeted for. And if it's outside of the budget, we have that discussion before it happens. Our purchasing card policy, P card policy. And my favorite policy I'm working with currently and probably also the reason, probably not everyone's new favorite employee. Uh the purchasing card program was established to streamline the payment for goods, services and services by individuals. Uh for county operations without the administrative burden of traditional government methods of payment. The Lake County procurement policy and all related policies and procedures apply to the use of a P card. And the P card serves as a means of payment, but it's not meant to be an alternative to our procurement policy. Or submitting uh invoices through accounts payable. Capital purchases cannot be made with a P card. Um and and this is a really big area that I'm working on is making sure that when we see things come through on a P card. It's funny you mentioned Amazon earlier, I am making an Amazon policy. Um we have a county Amazon account and if people purchase through the Amazon account with the county, we have an invoice that's paid their accounts payable. It is my goal that people will not wildly use their P card on Amazon and so that is one of the biggest things I'm working on right now and part of why we have a P card policy. So we have some constraints around, okay, what are we using P cards for? Could this have been an accounts payable invoice? Um that we're a little bit more able to track and and plan for accounts payable, you have a little bit of lead time before you pay. A P card, it's really hard to go back and re-pull back a transaction that already has happened versus accounts payable, we're reviewing it before we pay for it.
Great. Questions? I'm glad you're working on that, I'm not I'm not mad at you at all.
Great.
You're my favorite.
Yeah, I think the community at large is really um.
That's a big sticky point.
Would like to hear, you know, know a lot more about a lot of this, but this is awesome to hear on our end.
Um so. It's almost worth like an information session, don't you think? Yeah.
Yeah.
For people to be able to ask financial questions about policies, procedures, how things have been done and what the plan is and that sort of.
Yeah.
So our P card policy, um one thing that's great is that they were audited before I joined. Um to see if anyone had left employment and if a card was still out. Uh and those cards were canceled, I can't remember the exact number that he gave me, but there was like o- over a hundred and twenty-five cards out, I believe. And we're down to eighty-five. And and I have been working with directors to say, is this an instance where you have a designated buyer? Or you're a director or an elected official, if it's not, does a card need to be out? Can we cancel that card? Uh and part of that is limiting the cards to two thousand dollars. Um something that's new is that we allow for directors and elected officials to ask for an increase. Um to, you know, meet their needs on a regular basis, but what we're really trying to do is say, hey, is this a one-time increase? Can we set it to expire after thirty days? Are you just paying for hotels for travel? Can we up it so you can cover that, whatever it is, you know, that's been approved within their budget and can we drop that limit right back down? Um so that is a really big uh thing that we are going to be working on this year is kinda to drop those limits down unless it's absolutely justified. For like emergency services or DHS, sometimes they have to home a child or get clothes, you know, they might have a different limit. And so I really wanna identify what those outliers are and document in our policy this year. Um you have to fill out a purchasing card application. Uh and that means that you know the rules and you're saying that you agree to them and you will follow them. Um temporary limit increases require a date of increase, a rationale, and if you don't have one, I'll help you build one. Or ask you for all of the information before approving a limit increase. And this is done on a case-by-case basis by myself and Tim. Um cardholders are required to review purchases and code them, including yourselves, to the proper GL account code. And these need to be submitted for verification for each transaction no later than the fifth day of each month. We can't close the month until the P cards have been reconciled for the previous month. And I don't think this has been very. Well enforced, I know we're working on enforcing it. Um I don't wanna surprise anybody, but I will be sending out an email. Uh and I think what our staff has discussed is you get two times of, hey, this is a warning. First time's a warning, second time, your card gets suspended, third time, all bets are off and we take your card. Because it's a responsibility to to have a card. And that's part of like your job as a director is to own the responsibility. Because it's a responsibility to to have a card, and that's part of like your job as a director is to own the responsibility of having a card.
Is it two thousand dollars a month or per person?
It's the limit on the card.
It's a limit on the card.
Yeah, so once you've maxed out your limit till we've paid the cards back down, you wouldn't have that money to spend again. And of course, if there is an emergency situation, I think that's where we work to define like a director or like DHS probably needs a higher limit, and I think that's something we need to define in our policy as we work on it this year.
Are are all these bullet points currently in effect or is this what we're working towards?
This is what we're currently doing.
Okay, awesome.
Should be doing, will be doing. Costs associated with accidental or deliberate misuse of the P card will be deducted from your paycheck or final paycheck unless other arrangements have been made. To be honest, we usually ask people to pay it into the treasurer just because we don't really love to touch people's paychecks unless they force us to touch their paycheck, I mean, we're allowed to, but we really, it's messy also on the paycheck end of things, so we try not to do that. Um department directors or elected officials and the finance director have the right to cancel or suspend P card privileges at any time. If that happens, we collect your card and we cancel it and document that it was for failure to follow the policy. Uh the P card policy isn't meant to be an alternative to procurement or using A P, and we make sure that capital purchases don't happen to happen on the P card. Any questions? Travel reimbursement policy, um Lake County government is committed to investing in its employees by participating in educational opportunities in the county and outside of the county. Uh we encourage employees and elected officials to engage with colleagues and other communities, um because of this commitment, we reimburse in county employees and elected officials who participate in educational opportunities and other business-related matters outside of the county. Expenses incurred for business-related or education-related travel must fall within the parameters of this policy and our purchasing policy in order to be reimbursed.
Does that include our gas that we used before we were sworn in? Can I get reimbursed for that or?
You cannot.
No.
Okay. I looked into that one, sorry guys.
Thank you for looking into it.
Yes.
Yeah, I've got a lot of miles on that poor van, going back and forth to Denver for county business through Waltham Lake County.
All right, the travel reimbursement policy, um you have to complete a travel reimbursement form. I'm happy to report you used to have to request an Excel copy and I made a fillable form that will be appearing to our website soon. Um just, we we don't want the form edited, and sometimes an Excel version, just weird things happen. Um so meals, in order for meals to be reimbursed, we will reimburse for costs incurred up to the per day meal rate. That's why a receipt is required. Uh if a meal is provided at the hotel in the morning or at a conference that you're traveling to and there's a protein option provided, that meal's not reimbursable, often we've paid for a conference and the cost of the breakfast or dinner that's included in the conference is part of that conference cost. Um mileage reimbursement rate is determined by the finance department. Um and it is included on the travel reimbursement form. Um we do not reimburse for travel within that county, a big reason we ask for uh receipts is to understand where the uh charge occurred um and when it occurred. We also require travel receipts, even when you're using personal funds, uh so we can reimburse you for those expenses and supporting documentation. We require a conference agenda or an event schedule, so we partially like our our um meal rates are based on where you've traveled. Um and we are going to be asking for a proof of attendance as our certificate of completion. We also understand some trainings, um an example I can think of is the coroner's office sometimes has to go to Denver and travel to watch an autopsy if it's an outlier. Um so we know that they don't have an event schedule, uh but they do have someone who they've uh watched perform an autopsy and that person could email us and let us know, hey, they definitely attended this. We just wanna make sure that we're transparent about what we've gone to and what we've spent money on if we're paying it as a county. Um we'll be listening.
Did you just take a picture yourself there?
Yes.
I'm just wondering, just because like I would, I would find that so burdened, so I'd be like, oh my god, now I have to write these five emails saying that yes, this person was here.
Oh, you can just shoot us an email and we'll reach out to the person, but usually.
I'm saying the other person, not me, I'm saying the other.
Usually a conference agenda or proof of attendance is fine.
Okay.
The reason, the reason we do go to those lengths because in the past, people have said we have
It's not happened.
gone to something and they lied.
They're liars.
Yes.
Went skiing.
Naughty.
They did something.
We don't know what they did.
Yeah. But we're not reimbursing them.
We have had a lot of wily reimbursements.
And where do we submit these? Cause I have some receipts from our last CCI meeting.
So you'll, you would go on the website, grab the travel reimbursement form, fill out the form, uh include your receipts and it gets submitted to accounts payable.
Okay.
Um we are asked for receipts, you know, for any of the taxi fares, parking receipts, rental car statements, fuel receipts, restaurants. Essentially save your receipts. Um receipt statements and invoice should be saved if you're using a P card for travel. Um travel expenses beyond the reimbursable amounts that are charged to the P card will be the responsibility of the employee or elected official. Grants. The definition of a grant for purposes of the grant policy and procedures, it's an award of financial assistance in the form of money or property by a funding source uh to include federal, state government or other local governments, nonprofit agencies and private businesses and citizens that the county can accept or reject. Um just because we're offered a grant or considering a grant, we need to be really con- conscientious to review the documentation regarding the grant, sometimes we have a matching responsibility or it's reimbursement-based, and we wanna make sure we actually have the funds to match or front the cost of a grant before we agree to take it on. Um I know that our grants policy is relatively new and I do recognize it needs some workshopping so that it it is not a really laborious process, but that we and you, who have to approve the grant, get the information we need before we find out a grant happened and it's not been tracked. Um so we just wanna make sure we've got the correct information, the appropriate level of um approval and that we're effectively accounting for the dollars we receive uh and and that we're reporting on them correctly. Um all grant award acceptances uh need to have approval from county admin, the attorney uh in the B O C C. Um mainly if we're accepting something, we need to make sure we've budgeted for it so that our budget reflects revenues that we plan for and expenses that we plan for associated with them. Um the grant award letter and acceptance agreement uh get forwarded to our attorney uh to review, you know, from a legal perspective, so we don't enter into anything that like would cause us to be out of compliance or get sued later, we just wanna make sure we understand what we're agreeing to, cause a a grant award and acceptance is a negotiated contract. Um and then the grant award letter and acceptance agreement should also be forwarded to finance, so we can review the grant award to make sure we understand how it needs to be reported if there are any special conditions or deadlines. Um this is really a huge place in the last audit that caused a lot of grief is trying to track down um grant agreements, acceptance and award letters and reimbursements to prove that we actually were still owed grant funds or that we had received them. Um and this was really at the heart of the comment in the in the audit that you saw where we kind of got dinged for not having a grants policy and also being poor communicators about grants. And so part of our policy is making sure everybody's on the same page about when we receive a grant to know that we need to be tracking it and recording it appropriately in our county. Uh this is kind of just a, this is in our grants policy, this is just at a high level, a walkthrough. Uh department identifies the grant. Uh they reach out to Tim or finance and confirm that we've got matching funds and actual staff resources to carry out the piece of the grant that's dictated in the grant. Um this is a piece that is currently standing, but I think um uh we wanna make sure that people have approval before they apply. Um so we wanna make sure that they fill out a processing request form and just a summary so that it can be looked at before we waste time, I mean, grant applications can take a lot of time and energy, and if we know we can't cover it financially, we don't want other departments to to spend time they don't need to. Um we'll draft a proposal, once you're okay to submit, submit that grant application. Um if awarded, then the attorney, finance and and you guys uh review it to accept it. Um if we, if it's rejected, um we'll keep those documents so we can kind of analyze why. Um and then grant performance is just making sure that if we are required to report at certain intervals or document certain items, um we do so. And then upon the completion of all the grant requirements, um we would summarize, you know, that the grant's been wrapped up and keep that documentation on hand, so we don't continue to try to account for it if not needed. Last one. The general fund poli- fund reserve policy. Um this is just a policy that was created to help the county remain financially stable um by maintaining appropriate reserves uh to prevent major disruptions in regular business operations. Um so this aligns with uh G A S B, which is a government accounting standard, standard board statement number fifty-four um and how it classifies um fund balances based on how restrictive or not restrictive they are. So G A S B uses the terms non-spendable, committed, restricted, assigned and unassigned. And you'll see that we utilize some of those terms and I'll give you a little bit more clarity on the next slide. Um the reserve policy just says there's a targeted minimum reserve level at ten percent of the budgeted general fund operating revenues excluding one-time transfers. If the reserve falls below the established amount, like say we had to tap into this, you guys um have three years to replenish those reserves. So if we had to touch one of these, we would have to have a plan for how we're gonna replenish it. Um so unrestricted budgetary general fund balances can include the following contingency and reserve types. So the general fund contingency, that's appropriated, so we're unassigned. Um this contingency is maintained equal to ten percent of general fund operating revenues excluding one-time transfers. Um this acceptable uh contingency reserve uses are for emergency uh situations, unexpected one-time opportunities uh and appropriation transfers to allow spending in other funds. The ten percent general fund contingency reserve can be replenished annually, once we finish the audit. Um if we have county finances that are unreserved or undesignedated fund balances, we could transfer to the general fund. Uh this is really upon your uh approval unless it's been already delegated in in the budget approval, could be used to get this accomplished. Um budget stabilization reserve, not appropriated or assigned. Um this reserve has been created and is named the mine closure fund. And fund is meant to offset operating deficits as a result of economic downturns and revenue reduction impacts from outside of agency actions. It creates ad- create adverse service impacts, allowing time to reduce spending and find other ongoing revenue opportunities if we need to. Um you guys may add to the reserve from time to time, but not draw from it from it until drastic a drastic decline in valuation, apologies.
Anyway, don't go on, let me just read this for a second.
Sorry, there's a lot packed into these descriptions.
Can I ask a question uh while you're reading that also without distracting you too much? So the verbiage in the um budget stabilization reserve, even though it's always called the mine closure fund, it's what I see is a, you know, a a drastic economic downturn um impact from outside agency actions. But does that mean that like say something else creates a serious economic downturn outside of the mine closure that these are open to use? Or does it have to be directly related to the mine closure?
It it has to be specified in in the document reservation.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure because I didn't see that in this description, so it was.
It's on the pass on the ballot, right?
I do uh.
I think that's how it passed on the ballot.
Yes, and and that's, that's what's reflected there, at least when it was approved by voters at for that purpose, and so that's why I'm kind of specific to that.
Yeah, no, that's fine, that's what it should be for, that's, you know, I just didn't know if there was some weird loophole in there that I had never noticed before.
So, okay, the general fund contingency, is that a separate fund or is that like a balance we cannot go below? I think that's where
I might have to rely on Tim, I just heard learned of this policy and jumped into it.
Nice, okay.
No problem, no problem.
It's just part of our general fund.
Okay.
Yeah, we just can't go below it.
And we, we'd have to look and see if there was a resolution or something that had been established in that that said what it's for. And that's where you, sometimes we don't know, and we can't always find those resolutions, but.
Somewhere in my filing cabinets?
I may.
We made this of all of them going back to the nineties, thank you Sarah.
Don't recycle them.
You know, recorded as something else and we don't find it, but trust me, somebody else will and remind us of what it says, so um we have to look at it if, you know, in terms of if it says that this fund's created to create the fund, there you have to be actually to create a fund specify what it's for and how it will be funded essentially, and if you, how those those funds can be used or transferred or that kind of stuff, at least that's what I've seen with the rest of the fund things, he's back, so maybe he can do this.
Tim?
Yes.
Do you believe?
Is the general fund contingency an actual fund or is that just like a policy that we don't go below ten percent of our yearly operating in the general fund?
The line, yeah.
And do we set what the ten percent is based on what we've the budget we've set to DOLA, is that what establishes the ten percent?
Basically, so it it'll change every year, so it's set to, set to the ten percent of general fund operating revenues. Um it's higher than our expenditures, right? So that's how you get that.
Yeah, okay.
And that's a basically, right, if you're thinking of it as your personal bank account, you're like, okay, I can't go below three hundred dollars, that's what this is saying.
No, it makes perfect sense, I'm glad this exists.
Yeah.
Sometimes we say like, sometimes people will say a a number of days or a number of months that you have contingency for, we just have a percentage.
Yeah, we have a percentage of the revenue.
Yeah, good. Which is like one month, but like
Yes, but we're.
One point two.
Three and a half weeks.
Close it.
Three and a half weeks?
Yeah, maybe a month and a half.
Yeah. Oh, no, I went back to my.
It's a standard.
And that's part of, part of it too, right, so um right, uh think of like two thousand eight with the recession and housing bubble uh bursting and all of those kind of things, right? Local governments didn't see that day one, it takes a while to ease into them, so you have time throughout that, you know what your kind of your reserve or your bottom, bottom line is, your reserve policy is, but you also have that time to like look at like, okay, where can we cut, where can we cut? And then, you know, getting to the worst case scenario of like them looking at staffing and being like, okay, we gotta lay people off or do furloughs.
Mm-hmm.
Um but you, you have a, you have a runway, right? It's not like if, even if the mine closes tomorrow, our revenue's not gonna like drastically drop. Um twenty twenty-six, yes, but we got a year to to plan and fret over it.
Right. All right, the last two uh items that were uh clarified in in this uh general reserve fund are the capital and economic um development reserves. Um so these reserves may be created to fund economic development opportunities um to plan new and development capital projects uh and capital maintenance projects to sustain existing county infrastructure and minimize additional borrowing to help manage tax rate impacts on revenues. Um and then the last one is the personnel and operating reserves. These reserves can be created to fund specific operating expenditure areas. These reserves can be created to fund specific operating expenditure areas that are susceptible to economic fluctuations and to fund personnel costs that can be reasonably, reasonably estimated in our short term in nature such as a merit pool, leadership training, or continued education.
So again, these are just reserves within the general fund.
Yes.
So this is something that like the former B O C C, any of us could use. It's like the capital and economic development fund, development reserve versus using a separate fund to try to get those long-term goals built up for.
Yeah.
It wouldn't bind future.
Would things like fixing sidewalks come under the definition of county infrastructure?
Um, it is.
Maintenance projects.
It is our sidewalk.
Yeah, we sidewalks, do we have?
Um.
Hmm, that's right.
Like five miles?
Well, even if there are sidewalks like out in the county and developments and stuff, there also may be um agreements with the developer who's responsible for those if they haven't been. Sidewalks and roads. In reference.
That's all we have.
Dylan.
Beautiful canvas.
Thanks for bearing with me. I'm.
Thank you, Candace. Thank you for presenting, Candace. That was, it, it was honestly really uh
Yes.
complex and equal parts complex and encouraging. So thank you. It was really good stuff in there.
And then, um, uh, I know that person is no longer online, but yes, so. Oh. Ooh, Florida.
We never pop up first.
I think it's one of Ohio and Michigan and.
Florida, Illinois.
There we go. Alright, so under um Board of County Commissioners, we have to update this picture cause Matt's eyes are closed.
Thank you.
Oh.
Oh, I guess so, Andy's. I wonder if Sami did that.
No, I, I just, I know.
Um, but under Board of County Commissioners, under your guys' page, we have onboarding. So every presentation we've done, we have here. And then if there are other, you know, uh, spaces, you know, we can put them on department uh pages as well. But for right now, if you wanna direct folks to, to this, this is where it's at. And then all of these work sessions are being recorded and, and posted to YouTube.
Could we call it something different?
Yeah, what do you wanna call it?
I don't know.
We can.
Commissioners one oh one or something, something that helps people understand that it's not just for us, but it's also educational and training for everybody to understand what our job is.
Sure.
What could have better word for that? I saw onboarding and I was like, oh god, H R came forward.
Good sound, yeah.
So I didn't even click on it.
Um.
Yeah.
Click on it.
That's a good point. It's, it's, it's another tool that we can have outreach to the community with.
Yeah.
I think part of our promises to the community pre-election was that we were gonna make that a priority.
What, county government one oh one?
Yeah.
Cause all the uh department memos that I've sent you guys will also be posted there, their own department websites. We can change it to county government one oh one?
Yeah. You're down that?
I know. Alright. Cool. Um, excellent. Thank you everyone for your time. Uh, I know as you think through these things or let them uh sink in, I know you will have more questions and we are ready for them. I'm happy to accommodate those. Um, this evening, just to let you know, uh, the library in AMAX room is a Harrison Ballfield Open House for the planning process for that. So if you'd like to attend, you are more than welcome. This one's a little more uh business, community, employer focused, um, but it's also open to everyone, but.
It's just a drop-in, did you?
Yeah, just a, just a drop-in or about the project or uh Gabby Bowler from the S E group uh has been the, our, our project lead on it. So if, you know, if you have any burning questions or you wanna see the overview where they're at, this is an open house, feel free to drop in.
What's the S E group?
S E group is a planning group. Um, they have uh offices over in Summit County, but they are the uh, um, we, we did receive a DOLA grant for this one, um, for that.
Yeah.
Um, so they were the group that won the bid or the RFP uh for that.
For site planning and uh.
Master.
Essential drawings.
Yeah.
It's five to seven. Yeah, it's been co-hosted at the Chamber and the EDC with us, so.
Yeah.
There was also an open house. So we made it from nine to eleven and then five to seven.
And then uh tomorrow, we'll start diving in at nine AM with county departments of manager's office, attorney, H R, admin, Candace, Bubank. We have our potluck tomorrow, Sixth Street Gym.
Saw your cookies. I was like, I don't know what those are for. Don't forget.
Um, and then in the afternoon at two PM, uh, we'll uh hear from other elected officials in that county.
Thank you.
Yeah. Alright.
Okay, this three thirty-five and this work session is concluded.
Okay. And yes, many of these will be posted to YouTube.